Call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, September 28, 2022. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Henigan?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Commissioner Brahm?
Here.
Chairperson Mateo?
I am here. We have a quorum.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting, minutes of August 24, 2022?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye. I did notice one typo.
Yeah, there are any edits that we want? Oh, I'm so sorry.
But that's...there was a reference to site instead of sign code. That's only a typo I noticed. I can find the exact location.
Any other edits? Okay, so with that eventual edit, please call the roll. Sure. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak now rather than during one of our agenda items? Seeing none. Do we have an update from the village board?
Yes, we do. On September 15, Assistant Village Manager Monroe presented the first of four segments of the TOD amendments to the board, and the board didn't take action on the amendments. This was for discussion to allow time for each section of the amendments to be reviewed by the public and for refinements. So they'll have three additional readings of the TOD amendments in future meetings.
Thank you. Going on to new business, site plan review for 735 Leesley Road, Blythe Elementary School parking lot.
Yes.
This is on page 10, for those of you following the electronic PDF.
First, I'd like to introduce the representatives of the petitioner, which is Riverside School District 96. I'll provide an overview of the project, review the parking requirements, review the sites' impervious surface coverage, and clarify additional landscape requirements for the project. Three representatives of the petitioner are here with us tonight: Jim Fitton, who's the Certified School Business Official with District 96, Ryan Kelly with DLA Architects, and Jason Green with the WT Group. This application is brought for the commission's review because Blythe Elementary School is a special use in the R1A's...
I'm sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Marhol is going to recuse himself because he's on the D-96 school board.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Thank you. This application is brought for your review because the Blythe Elementary School is a special use in the R1A district. Section 10224 of the zoning code requires developments that are special uses to complete site plan reviews by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but no variations are required for the application. District 96 is proposing to remove and replace the two parking lots on site, the north lot and the south lot. The project will improve vehicular and pedestrian safety. It'll bring the number of parking spaces into compliance with the zoning code. It will increase the amount of green space on the site and also decrease the amount of impervious surface on the site and improve the site's stormwater retention. The plans meet the applicable standards in the zoning ordinance with the exception of some additional landscaping, which is required between the parking lots and the parkway. I'll just touch on a few points. When the auditorium conversion is complete, the school will have 14 classrooms, which requires 28 parking spaces. The project will result in site having 28 marked parking spaces, two of which will be accessible. So that requirement will be met. The site plan shows the improvements to the south lot include redesigning the lot to reduce the amount of pavement, particularly between the building and the parking lot, and using pervious pavers for a row of eight parking spaces near Blythe So referring to some calculations that were not included in the site plans, the current amount of impervious surface on the site, it's about a 4.1 acre site. It's about 16% impervious surface currently. The reduction of impervious surface, and I can get into the specific numbers if you'd like, of that south parking lot will bring it down to 13% of the site. So obviously, that's well below what's required for the R1A district of 50%. So that's a substantial improvement over already a very compliant site. And regarding the landscaping, the project does require shrubs to be planted between the parking areas and the parkway, and the applicant has stated that they're willing to plant those additional shrubs. If you have any specific questions about the memo that I can answer, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the petitioner and let them present.
Any questions for Planner Siren at this point? Okay. Do you want to say any words?
Good evening. My name's Ryan Kelly. I'm with DLA Architects. We're the architects of record for Riverside School District 96. Just to give a little bit of an introduction, I think Anne covered it very well. The district has had a long-term goal of separating parking and play. These parking lot replacements are a maintenance project but also part of a larger project that will bring the Blythe Park Elementary School up to 14 classrooms. So in doing that, we wanted to bring the parking up to village code as well. So, you know, with that, we're looking at reducing the amount of pervious surface, and I'd invite Jason to talk through some of the technical aspects and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Jason Green, WT Group. Good evening. Thanks for having us here. We have aerial of the site and the surrounding area up on the easel right now, and you can point to the north parking lot on the north side of the school, and then the south parking lot on the south side of the school. That's the existing conditions, obviously. And then, if you want to flip to the next board, there's a survey that we prepared, just shows the property, and then again, the north and the south parking lots. And really, that's it for the survey. We'll skip to grading plan. So I want to talk a little bit more detail about the north parking lot. In the north parking lot, we're adding one net additional parking space. For the most part, it's matching the existing size. It might have increased by three square feet or maybe even less. So it's practically the exactly same size as the existing. We have added perimeter curbs around, just to help to contain the cars, gives the cars an idea where to park and not go beyond the limits of the parking lot itself. And then, we propose root pruning for the trees that are adjacent to the parking lot so that we can surgically cut the roots rather than just go through with a bulldozer and pull roots and damage trees. Does a lot more damage to a tree when you just do that instead of surgically root prune the roots. And then, currently, the parking lot drains to a storm sewer inlet manhole that's in the middle of the parking lot, which drains to Kent Road, and we're going to mimic that in the proposed condition. So we'll put a new manhole and we'll connect it back into Kent Road again. The south lot, there, we're adding roughly 15-car parking, parking for 15 cars, and the two handicap parking spaces are in that lot. The reason is the front entry, which is where handicap or accessible route would be for the south parking lot. The size of this parking lot is significantly reduced by, from 15,500 to 9,670 square feet. So it's a net reduction of 5,800 square feet roughly, or 27%. Again, proposed, we've proposed perimeter curbs, six-inch curbs around the perimeter to, again, contain the cars as well as the drainage. The curbs help the drainage because in the existing condition, the south parking lot just sheet drains to Blythe Road, which means just that the water lands on the surface and it runs right off into the street. The curbs help us to contain that drainage and to block it and so we can direct it where we want it to go rather than into the street and the place we want it to go. There's a trench drain at the driveway, which will capture water that's running down the driveway, and then we have a series of storm sewers around that will capture water and it'll bring it to the permeable paver area, Vanna, if you would. They'll bring it to there, and underneath the pavers, there's just over two feet or 27 inches of gravel, permeable gravel. The water will be drained into that, and then it'll be stored temporarily before it's slowly released. The gravel also helps to clean the water because as the water flows through gravel, it gets scrubbed by the gravel, individual gravel pieces, and it cleans up the water. So it's cleaner and it's slowed down. The amount that it slowed down is roughly 40% reduction in the flow rate of the runoff. So in addition to that, because in the existing condition, remember, it sheet drains, we've proposed to connect it into the storm sewers with pipes, through pipes, so that the water doesn't get onto the surface of the road. It's into, it goes directly into the storm sewers, again, at that reduced rate. Again, root pruning is proposed, and...oh yeah, I'm going to clean the water. The volume of the gravel pit is just under 700 cubic feet of storage. For this size of a project, it's that's a decent volume. Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. This is an exhibit that shows, that tries to show the comparison of the existing and the proposed impervious areas. So the existing is shown in gray, and then the proposed is shown in red, and the permeable paver area is shown in a little, is red, but it's a little different pattern. So you can see that it's the eight parking stalls at the south end of the lot. The reason that the permeable pavers are proposed in that location is because that's the natural low spot of the parking lot. So water runs into that area, and then because it's low, it allows the water, it gives the water a chance to permeate through the pavers to get into that gravel beneath it. So placing it up the hill wouldn't be as beneficial because it would, water wouldn't drain through it if it wasn't, if it wasn't flat or the low spot. And then, that's utilities. So again, the utilities will show the trench drain. Oh, you can show that again. Trench drain. Yep. And that pipes it into the gravel pit beneath the permeable pavers, and then there's a series of other inlets and manholes that also bring the water into that area. And then, you can flip it. This is a cross-section view of that gravel pit. So 27 inches of gravel beneath the permeable pavers. I don't even know if I'm pointing here. So basically, that's where the water will get stored. There's a pipe that comes in, lets the water go into that gravel, and then there's a pipe on the other end, meaning it's intentionally on the other end so that water has to go all the way through the gravel to the other side before it goes out. And then from there, there's a manhole on the east side of it with the double circles on the top. And then from there... And then, as the water leaves that gravel pit, it goes to a restrictor manhole on the east side, and then it routes it south to Blythe Road into the storm sewer system. That is the technical side. Either of you want to wrap up or...
Any questions for Mr. Kelly or Mr. Green?
I had some questions about what you just described. As far as, I'm somewhat familiar with the site. I don't think there's going to be a lot of trash there, but how do you prevent trash from getting into, say, the trench drain or something, and then into the gravel bed and then interfering with the whole process?
Yeah, yeah. So there's a, there's a few ways that we have proposed to improve that, capture that trash, because that's an important thing. Once water, if any trash does get into that gravel system, that's a closed system, so that gravel will, could be a trapping point, very difficult to clean it once it's gotten into there. So we definitely want to capture it before it gets into that system. So the first way that we have proposed to capture that sediment is to have catch basins. So a catch basin is like a manhole, except it has a deeper section. It's deeper so that the sediment settles in that deeper section, and then, as water rises, the clean water will be decanted off the top and it'll go through the pipes, but the dirt and the debris stay below. Also, snouts are proposed. There are, there are a cap that goes over the pipe, and that keeps the floatables, like plastic bottles, from floating on the water and going through that pipe. So it acts like almost kind of a pea trap where the water, the water level rises up above that snout, if this is the manhole, I can probably draw it, and then, and then water, the clean water will go underneath and up and through into the pipe. So that's number, that's two ways...
Is there a catch basin then for every manhole, basically?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then also, permanent filters. So it's like a coffee filter. I can hear you fine. It's fine.
Well, maybe the TV cannot. I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Coffee filter. It's kind of like a coffee filter underneath a manhole lid. So you just have a kind of conical filter that fits in underneath, and it's made from fabric, which is permeable, so that when water comes through a lid of a manhole, it drain, it strains through that, captures the sediment and debris, and then the clean water goes on its way. So that's the third, that's the third leg of the stool for...
Okay. And then, do you provide the district, I guess, with instructions as to the maintenance of these systems?
Yeah, yeah. So in general, the maintenance for the first year is, is more aggressive until we figure out how often those, all these three items fill up, and then we, we select a more permanent maintenance schedule based on performance.
I did have another question, too. I noticed on the diagram, there's something called a backflow preventer. I noticed at least three. Those, those are new. Those don't exist now. Is that true? And you're adding them? And so what would be the impact of those?
Yeah. So the backflow preventer, they're specifically, they're called Tideflex Checkmate Backflow Preventers. And the, the old backflow preventers were made with metal, and they rusted, and they got rusted open or shut, and they didn't work fairly well. These ones are all rubber, so they act like a diaphragm, and the rubber just kind of holds its shape until there's enough water pressure. Only takes a couple inches of water pressure behind it to open that and let the water go. But if there's a backup in the street and water starts backflowing, coming backwards towards the site, it closes and it doesn't let that water in. And the important, the important reason for that, the most important reason for that is to keep any debris that might be in that water from getting back into the gravel as well.
Okay.
So it keeps the gravel clean, just like the, the other measures mentioned earlier.
Okay. So that's the main purpose for this site? That's the main purpose for that?
Yeah, yeah. And they don't exist today. They don't exist today. So we're proposing those as new now.
I'm just kind of thinking about the neighbors, obviously, and if that's going to impact. But you probably wouldn't know that, if that's going to impact their level of flooding and those residences. Because if these don't exist now at the school, that's all I'm...
Yeah, so...
I don't know what current conditions are versus what would happen under these situations. Okay. I think that's all I have.
Other questions? You gentlemen have been here often enough to know that this commission really appreciates attempts to reduce impervious surfaces, so we really appreciate that. And we also appreciate landscaping. So one, some comments we heard after the Ames rebuild is that the lovely plants didn't get watered. So maybe this is a question for Mr. Fitton. What's the watering plan, at least for the first year? Can you go to the podium, please?
For instance, the site that we just put down, landscapers, that's part of the project. They're going to be watering it, and I think that'll be our plan going forward when we put trees in. So there, it'll be part of the quote, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Green, you mentioned root pruning. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Full transparency, I'm not a landscape architect, civil engineer, but I've been around enough to know a little bit. I'm not a, I wouldn't call myself an expert on it. But basically, they excavate where they're going to be working next to a tree, and then they surgically cut the roots that are going to be impacted by the grading. Let's say that there's a big root that comes out of the tree, and it goes right through where we're going to put a utility or pavement, or we're going to do some digging. So rather than just bring a bulldozer and drive, pull through here and yank on that root and tear it, it'll do a lot more damage. We cut it as close to that area as possible so that we leave, we don't disturb the portion of the root that's to remain. Whereas, if we just pulled it with a bulldozer, this part would get pulled as it gets yanked. So that's the reason. It's surgically cut it so that the portion that's going away can, and the portion to remain can still remain with, undisturbed. That's basically it.
Thank you. There's an existing tree on the northwest side of the north lot, and the proposed apron is much wider than the current one. What do you think will happen to the health of that tree?
So it's not going to improve the health of that tree. We've, that's the real reason that we started showing the root pruning notes at all, was because of that one tree. With the width of that driveway, the existing drive's a little bit narrower, so to meet code, we had to widen it. And so we tried to stay away from it as much as we could. We showed the root pruning nodes, but honestly, it's, it's going to have some impact to that tree. We don't know the extent, but we're doing what we can to minimize that impact.
So that flare of the apron next to and under the tree, that's to code? It can't be any smaller?
It's also complicated because of the angle. We're trying to come around the tree and then, and come in perpendicular to the street. So that, that adds to the, to the constraints.
So it can't be smaller?
Unless we can get a, I don't know, a variance to go with a narrower drive, maybe considering it's a, it's a small parking lot, maybe that would be a consideration. I don't know.
So the constraint, I think you're saying, by the width of this drive, which is to code.
Commissioners have any thoughts on this?
Can you repeat the state of the tree that you're talking about? I'm not familiar with it.
Right now, it's a large oak tree or something?
36-inch diameter trunk, sorry, just on the edge of this north.
And it's healthy now?
Sure.
Yes, to my knowledge. So it's on page 21 for those doing the PDFs, under attachment D. I mean, if you're...I mean, we can't ask the petitioners to, can't ask D-96 to come back for a variation. That's not our place.
Chairperson Mateo, I might suggest recommending a root feed after post-construction to improve the health of the tree with the consultation of the village arborist. That could be a solution to help that tree.
That's a good idea. Okay. I'm not hearing other concerns from other commissioners.
Well, I mean, I'm very much not in favor of not having, we have had lost a lot of trees, so I don't want to say that I'm not concerned. I don't know if, I'm not an arborist either. I don't know if moving the new driveway, one or two feet, over how much that would impact that tree. Presumably, you know, the roots of that tree go underneath the entire existing driveway, as well as the existing road. So perhaps, I don't know. All I could suggest is that the forester be consulted and whatever we can do as far as being open to changes, you know, once the area's opened up, maybe. I don't know. I'm not sure. I can't tell from the plans, but is that apron area in the northern parking, in the north parking lot, is that being widened as part of your plan, or is the, is it existing? The width?
The drive is being widened to comply with code, so that apron is also being widened as well.
And then that's what's interfering with the tree?
That's what's impacting the drip line of the tree, correct?
I think we'd want to be very, DLA or the district, we need to be extremely careful not to put any heavy things anywhere around that tree, which I believe was done perhaps with a few of their other projects that I noticed in past years. No dumpsters, no heavy stone pallets, things like that around any large trees.
Typically, when we call for the root pruning, there's a snow fence or tree protection fence, the four-foot-tall orange plastic fence around the drip line that protects that and makes sure that that doesn't happen. Construction debris isn't placed around the tree.
But I think, given the expanse of the roots, that you don't want heavy things anywhere on any of, you don't want any of that soil compaction, even further out than four feet.
Sure.
But again, I'm not an arborist, so...
Nor am I.
I just grabbed a little demo list you planned to show to the commission.
And the reason is, it shows, I think it shows well the location of existing driveway to that tree. So we are definitely proposing the new driveway closer to it, but it is... It's about two feet closer in the proposed condition than the, than the existing. So it's, it is a little bit closer. It's not a lot, but that tree's already pretty close. So two feet in, makes, I guess, does make a little difference.
Well, we can make the site plan approval conditioned on working with the arborists to protect, do whatever can be done to protect the tree?
Well, that makes sense. I mean, perhaps there's no need for a curb in that area or other elements of construction in that area if that would go further down into the, into the ground, you know? I don't, to be sensitive.
I suppose the safety value of a curb would outweigh the tree.
Well, the tree still would need to be protected by the curb also in some ways, but I'm just thinking that people who've maybe dealt with this before could look at it and try and minimize the impact on it.
Well, we could probably use a curb, but we wouldn't, normally when you see a curb above the grade, it sticks down 18 inches into the ground.
That's what I'm thinking, right.
So maybe we can have a curb with a high point to protect the tree, but don't go as deep with the footing of it, if you will.
Right. That's exactly what I'm thinking, yeah. Right.
Yeah, right.
Compromise. I like it. Any other thoughts?
I did have a question maybe from Mr. Fitton. I'm just wondering about if there are future plans, because obviously, the area of the south parking lot, it's nice how it's reduced, but it would seem then there'll be no play in that parking area. So does the district have plans as to, if there is currently recreation there and different seasons, what will be done for the students?
The separate, the students will have to play more in the park area.
The park, okay.
So that's, that's the plan, to keep them away from the cars.
Does the district have any plans for, like, you know, adding any paved area into the, like, for basketball or anything else in the...
Not adding any new surface like that.
Okay.
But we had considered, if the park district would like it, to re-stripe where the tennis courts are so that they could be used for different sports.
Okay.
But that's just, it hasn't gone anywhere yet, but it's an idea.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the site plan review with the suggestions added?
I move to approve the site plan for the Leesley Road, Blythe Park Elementary School with the condition that the petitioner, the district, and do what it can to work with the forester and the village and other appropriate professionals to look at the impact on the oak tree by the north parking lot.
Second?
I second the motion.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. So chair's prerogative, I'm gonna switch up the order of our agenda and move on to old business update and discussion related to zoning ordinance amendments, accessory structures. Trustee Pollock will be presenting this? Is that right? This is page sixty of the PDF. Also note that Commissioner Markle has rejoined us.
Thank you. Is, I was told there was an overhead or a way to put in a flash drive?
Lorenzo to the rescue.
Thank you, Chairperson Mateo and Plan Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be in front of you here tonight. This is a unique circumstance. I am here as a trustee, but not representing the village board, I wanna make that very clear. Village Board, as, as, as was noted in your written report from staff, the village board had reviewed your recommendation at a prior meeting and asked that I work with staff to bring this back to the Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission and, and see this through. But again, I wanna be clear, any opinions or views that I express are just mine and not representative necessarily of the whole, full village board. As you know, the, you had seen, have seen this issue before. And in fact, back in, a year ago, October 21st last year, the Board of Trustees looked at your recommendation regarding amendments to accessory buildings. I won't go through those again, you're familiar with those, they're reiterated in the written report. There were some trustees, including myself, that expressed desire for further consideration, particularly in related, in relation to the organization and clarity of the proposed amendments, some definitions, issue of the number of accessory buildings permitted on a property, bulk regulations, height and area limits, the plumbing and mechanical regulations, and permitted uses of accessory buildings. That's kind of just a very broad list of some of the concerns that were expressed by the board. And I'll get into some more specifics of what we're looking at here. But as I began working with staff on this issue, we proceeded from the premise that the board, the village board would like the village, the Planning and Zoning Commission, to consider amendments that would expand residents' ability to use accessory buildings. Continuing to limit that use to accessory uses, but going beyond just storage of vehicles and storage of materials, household materials. Under the current code, accessory buildings, basically, garages are limited to the storage of vehicles. And if you have a half-story, which many of, many people do on their garages, all you can use that for is storage. You can't use it as a, for a hobby shop or a home office or whatever. And that's what I think the village board was trying to look at. We've gotten a lot of feedback from residents. I personally gotten feedback from residents who say things to me like, Doug, I'm tired of working from my dining room. I'd like to have the opportunity to have something a little bit nicer 'cause I expect I'm gonna be working from home the rest of my career, at least part-time. And then looking at other issues, you know, the thinking, at least my thinking was that, that if someone's using a detached accessory building as an accessory use, what is the, what is the downside of allowing that to be something other than storage? Particularly knowing that people are already doing it. People are already using their accessory buildings as a hobby shop or woodworking shop or whatever, or just as something other beyond just pure storage. The, just highlight a few aspects. You have a redline draft amendment in front of you that was prepared by myself and staff based on direction from the board and our own thoughts and ideas in this regard. And so I just wanna highlight on some key aspects of that. First of all, in the current ordinance, there's a whole section about accessory structures, which by definition is, is wrong because it clearly means accessory buildings. And I want you to think, in your deliberations and discussions, think about the difference between accessory structures and accessory buildings. An accessory building is also an accessory structure, but accessory structure is not always a building. I heard a comment from someone at a meeting once saying, we don't allow accessory structures in a street yard. And my response was, well, we certainly do, they're called sidewalks, they're called walkways. And there's probably other fences, not in a street yard, but a fence is a structure. So we had this whole section about accessory structures that only made sense if what they, if what the original authors meant was buildings. So that's one change that you see throughout the document is that whereas Claire that we're talking about buildings, we're calling them accessory buildings. We have whole other sections about fences, swimming pools, and other accessory structures, that patios, decks, those are regulated separately. So we wanted to make it clear that that, that first section that we were focused on is all about accessory buildings, not structures. Second aspect of that is, is how we define what is an allowable use of an accessory building. And under the current code, as I said, it basically says storage. And if you have a half-story, that's storage, storage of vehicles, storage of boxes, whatever. So that's something we tried to address, is saying if it's an accessory activity that's typical of a single-family home, why can't it occur in a detached accessory building? How does that, you know, if I'm, if I am using that accessory building, that half-story above or on the first floor of an accessory building, if I'm using that as an office, how's that detrimental to my neighbors versus whether I'm just using it for storage? So we looked at it in that, that respect. And then we looked at building, accessory building bulk regulations. And it, the table that, let me show that to you. So this is familiar from your packet. Not that. My fingers aren't running this right. So you, you saw this... This technology is arguing with me.
Okay, can you bring up that screen again and he'll, he will sign in?
Nobody look at this password.
Okay, so we looked at the bulk regulations for the existing bulk regulations, thinking, we know just from walking about town, as you all see, you see one-and-a-half-story garages everywhere. They're very common in the village. There's some that have been built recently, that, under the existing codes. So in seeing that around town, the question is, what, given our bulk regulations, is that half-story above the first floor, is that accessible? And does it have a ceiling height clearance sufficient for someone to have a home office in there? And if not, do we need to tweak the bulk regulations to make that happen? Well, this, this graphic shows that at a bare minimum, you can have, under the existing code, you could have a seven-foot, in this example, it's a twenty-four-by-twenty-four-foot accessory building, pretty typical. It's got dormers on, on the sides. And with that, those dimensions and the code regulations, you can have a twelve-by-twelve room with a seven-foot ceiling height. Barely enough, but enough, to be a habitable space. So we, we looked at that again, and I'll come back to that because some of the feedback we've gotten is that, yes, barely habitable, it would be better if we had another foot or two. So I'll get back to that in a, in a moment. The, and in looking at these regulations, we determined that the code, we clearly allow dormers on garages, accessory buildings. We see them all over town, they've been permitted recently. But the regulations don't specifically address that. And that could cause a problem where someone, I mean, this is a front view, a slice, pretend it's the middle, that upper floor is just the middle of the building. So you see a slice of a dormer, but you see setbacks from each end. There's really nothing in the code that would prevent someone from abusing that allowance for dormers and extending this dormer out. We have a twelve-foot maximum sidewall height. But then you add dormers, you know, how far back does that dormer have to be? You know, someone could really take it to the limit, set it back a foot or two, go straight up and claim that it meets the code. And they reach that eighteen-foot permitted maximum height, and they're only two foot back from the sidewall, which is twelve feet. That's not what we want, that's not the intent of the code. But we don't have anything specific to prevent that. So we wrote into the draft something similar that we do with, for the principal house, where you take a forty-five-degree angle from the side property line and say that all aspects of the building have to be below that forty-five-degree angle. That will prevent someone from taking a twelve-foot sidewall height, stepping back a foot or two or three feet even, and then going up another six feet to eighteen feet, and then across, 'cause that would have the effect of, of a much larger building than what we contemplate, that, that we think our code allows. So I view that as more of a clarification, to make sure that, that, that people understand that dormers have to be a small part of the roof structure, not a majority part of it. So that was one of the, and so we clarified that in the redline update. And then, as you're aware, Planning and Zoning Commission talked about utilities for accessory buildings. And your recommendation was that we allow plumbing in an accessory building, except that showers and baths are only allowed in pool houses. And, and I understand that, and I, I understand the reasons behind that. But I had concerns about that because the example I would use is you have two identical properties side by side. Same house, same, same lot size, same shape, they have the same accessory building in the backyard. Lot one has a pool. So they get to have a shower in their accessory building. Lot two does not have a pool, they don't get to have a shower. How does that impact the neighbors? How are the neighbors benefited by the fact, and property values preserved by the fact that lot two doesn't have a pool and doesn't allow, doesn't have a shower or bath in their, in their accessory building? So, you know, focusing on impacts on adjacent properties and, and trying to equalize or level the playing field, not, and, and so we had, our draft amendment suggested allowing plumbing, full plumbing in an accessory building. Now, I have to say, that's not something that, in my opinion, would, you know, if your recommendation to the board, and if the board approved it with limited plumbing or no plumbing, I think we can still achieve the goals that were set out to achieve here, which is to allow someone to make greater use of an accessory building. So it's not really a make or break in terms of, of our ultimate goals here. But I think as a matter of fairness, it should be addressed. You also saw in the memo that I had provided to the board, and staff had provided information to me about building code requirements for accessory buildings. That was more to just to confirm whether or not it's actually possible to do this with, with compliance with the building code. And we did confirm there are a few differences that have to be made, but nothing that would prevent someone from making, making use of a half-story above a garage for something more than just storage. So in summary, I think the issues that we want your feedback on, I want your feedback on, I think the board does too, is, one is the use. Is this broader definition where we say that an accessory building can be used for any accessory activity that may otherwise be permitted in the house accessory? We're not talking dwelling, that's not on the table at all. But an accessory use such as a playroom, an office, storage that's already allowed, or, or artist's studio. You know, these, you know, things that you would do in a family room or a basement that maybe now you, we could allow someone to do that in their garage or accessory building. So that's one, the use question, expanding the use of accessory building. Two is the plumbing, and as I said, I don't think that's a make or break issue in terms of what our ultimate goals here are as a village or as a village, from the village board. But I think it's, it's an equity issue and one that should be addressed. And then finally, the bulk regulations, the third, third topic. As I said, it's tight to, under the existing bulk regulations, the height limits, the sidewall limits, and all that. You can get room for an accessory building, but it's very tight. I know staff has had at least one builder reach out and say, say that exact same thing. Yeah, this works, but I think if most people wanted to do it, they'd like to have another foot or two in height to do it right, to really do it right. So our suggestion is if, if the Planning and Zoning Commission feels that an increase in height may be acceptable, acceptable, say nineteen or twenty feet instead of eighteen feet, that we use that forty-five-degree measurement line to say that you have to stay inside that, from that twelve-foot line sidewall building height, forty-five-degree angle. You have to stay three foot off the property line, you have to stay within that, that plane, which essentially means that if you maintain that aspect of it, essentially means if you go... means if you go beyond 18 feet, you've got to have a greater setback. So in this case, if this building that you see in the graphic is, were to be redrawn at 20 feet, and you kept that 45 degree angle and that plane exactly the same, that building would be about three feet further from the property line in order to stay within that scope. And that 45 degree angle is important because what we're regulating here, sun and light and shadow onto adjacent properties. So when you go two feet higher and three feet further in, you're not changing the amount of sun and light and air that goes over that building onto adjacent properties, because you're increasing the setbacks. Of course, you know, we're not suggesting any changes. I'm not suggesting any changes to the size area of requirements. But those three issues, the use, really two issues, I think, are of prime, the use and the bulk regulations, whether or not you want to consider allowing one or two feet more in height in exchange for a greater setback. And if, that's the direction, I talked to staff about this before the meeting. We would suggest that you give us direction on those issues, and then we come back to you with the final draft before you pass that along to the village board. And we can, we can come up with the final language based on your direction. I also wanted to, since I took the pictures, wanted to share some pictures, just to, I think it's always helpful to kind of put in perspective, you know, what we're looking at here. So, you know, here's a comparison, two houses. I hope I'm not showing anyone's home. But they're just random photos, all on the southeast side of town where I happen to live and walk. So here you see, you know, two photos. And the reason I like these photos, and what intrigued me when I was out walking, thinking about this in the spring and summer, was I actually think that these garages can be an asset to the village. I think they can add property value and utility to the use of a residential property. You know, people, I've heard people say, you know, I'm moving, I have to move because I need more space. I need a home office. Yet here, right in front of us, we have a potential solution. I personally, and this is just aesthetic preference, I personally think the picture on the right with the gable and the half story above is a more attractive building. And then I have some other photos, I'll just real quickly show you. Another example, this photo's not quite as good, you know, one with a dormer, one without, similar sized Again, similar situations, similar houses, similar garages. And then finally, side by side. Two very similar houses, two garages side by side. So I think that's helpful to think, what, you know, what are we seeing here? What, you know, is this half story concept desirable or not? I feel it is. I think, again, as I said, that adds value to a property. It adds utility for the homeowner. And I happen to think that it's an attractive, attractive look, more attractive than a traditional one story garage. So with that, I will stop. If you have any specific questions for me, I'd be glad to answer. But I look forward to getting your feedback.
Questions, thoughts?
Sure, please. You, trustee Pollock, Doug, you note the 45 degree criteria. In the draft ordinance, it's not super well defined. I assume it would be acceptable to make that a more defined measurement. It's, it's actually located in the roof dormer section of the draft ordinance. Sorry. Paragraph six, B, IVB. And then we have setbacks somewhere, oh, in part D. And I realize that's a very detailed question, but this 45 degree stipulation to avoid impacts to the neighbors and avoid encroaching on sunlight and such seems like it would be a priority when we start talking about increasing roof heights.
The draft you're looking at does not increase the roof height. And therefore, that dormer 45 degree angle was only applied to dormers to clarify, and to make sure dormers don't take up 80% of the roof, and to limit the size of dormers. We would use that, if the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to recommend or consider an increase in the overall height of accessory buildings, I was suggesting we would use similar language that you see there, as well as what we use for principal buildings, to apply to that to say that if you go up above 18 feet, that plane, that angle's going to force you away from the property line. But as written, it does only apply to dormers.
Thank you.
I just want clarification. We're giving you feedback, which you're going to take back to the board. I'm not really clear on what we are doing tonight.
Sure. I think, and it's up to you, ultimately, it's up to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But our suggestion, staff suggestion and mine, was that you give staff feedback tonight. And then I'll continue to work with staff and bring it back to you at a subsequent meeting before we send it along to the village board.
Well, we'd need to have a public hearing. Yes.
At some point, you do need to have a public hearing, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Are you picturing it going back to the village board and then sending it back here for a public hearing? Or do you think we would have a public hearing before it goes back to the board?
I think we could go either way. I think it really depends, it really depends on what your thoughts are on all this. I mean, if, if, if the majority of the Planning and Zoning Commission says, no, Doug, village board, we don't want to make any more changes. You know, we liked our recommendation from 2021, then we should just pass that along to the village board tonight. But if you're open to some of these ideas, if you want to explore them some more, then that's the feedback you would give staff and myself, and we would come back to you at your next meeting, to put that into writing, to put that into detailed recommendation that you could then make to the village board. And, you know, where the public hearing comes in, I, I'm not sure what the preference would be there, whether you go ahead with public hearing before it comes back to the board. Probably makes most sense to send it to the village board and then have the public hearing. But I haven't really thought about that.
And to reiterate, just because this is being presented to us from a board member, and some, suggesting some things that we've repeatedly suggested against, it doesn't mean we can't continue to suggest against. Or maybe we've changed our minds with the passage of time. Other questions, please?
Sure. I'm not sure if this is so much a question or a comment. So it's probably more of a comment. I, you know, your points are well taken. And I, I mean, I see where you're going. And I, you know, I think when we initially heard this, I mean, frankly, I wasn't sure if, you know, this whole work from home thing, it's a fad like the internets, right? But, you know, gosh, what do you know? It's, it might be for real. But one thing I would say is that, I mean, I remember this meeting, and I remain, you know, just adamantly opposed to any type of, you know, real plumbing in these buildings. Because my concern is, what's going to happen is people will be living there. And we can say you're not allowed to, and we can say it's, oh, we can't use it for a dwelling. There's all sorts of laws against things, and people do them anyway. And so once you have people living in there, then you've got to use village resources to get them out of there. And it's just, I just think that's, to me, that's the biggest danger of, you know, of the plumbing issue. I mean, your point about the pool houses, or about the two identical structures, and one has a pool and one doesn't, and so why does the one get plumbing and the other doesn't? My answer is because it's a pool house, it's got a pool. The other house doesn't have a pool. You know, life is unfair. If you want to have plumbing, you can build a pool and then you can have a shower. So to me, that's the main issue. The thing I'm most concerned about is I just don't want to see a scenario where these are being built. And over the years, you know, after we're all long off the board, this all degenerates into people are living in people's garages, and we can't get them out, and the neighbors are furious, and it's just, the village is spending more resource doing this than anything else. So, as I said, more of a statement than a question, and that, you know.
I'd like to follow up, if I may. So your concern is it turning into an accessory dwelling unit. I understand that concern. As I said, I think to accomplish, what I see as our goals here, the plumbing issue is secondary. It's not critical to this. The vast, this is intended for the vast majority of people who would just use it as a home office, whether there's any plumbing in there or not. So having said that, though, I feel like, and I feel like that the risk that someone would take on by having illegal accessory dwelling unit, the liability they would impose on themselves, because if you have someone living in your garage and something happens, you're in a boatload of trouble. That's a heck of a liability for an individual property owner to take upon themselves. So I don't think it would happen very often. I absolutely am certain it will happen. It already has happened. We already have had those situations without plumbing, without legal plumbing, I should say. So, but I don't think it would become such a problem that it would, I don't think it would become a widespread problem. Plus the fact that we have existing enforcement capabilities. You know, if you're transferring the property, selling the property, you're not going to be able to do that if there's an illegal dwelling unit in it. But, you know, that's, that's my perspective of it. And on top of that, I think what you're doing by saying that is you're punishing people who, for no, for the sake of a handful of cases where you might get an accessory dwell, illegal accessory dwelling unit, you're taking something away from everyone else. You're saying they can't have it. And that's more philosophical, I guess. But again, it's not critical to this issue. If the Planning and Zoning Commission agrees that we shouldn't allow plumbing, then you should, you know, that's, that's fine.
Other thoughts, questions?
I had a couple of things that sort of, I think, lead off of that a little bit. At the beginning of your presentation, Mr. Pollock, you mentioned something about the issue of storage, and how the current definition or the current code only talks about storage. But when I'm looking at the red line version here, I'm confused. What it says, what I have in front of me is it says, "The area above the vehicle parking spaces in a detached residential garage may be utilized for storage, but not living space." And then the red line is in addition, "Unless all requirements for creating such an allowed living space are met, no portion of an accessory building shall be used as a dwelling unless a coach house." So that, to me, is highly confusing. What's a living space that's not defined? What's a dwelling? And then if you go down to paragraph A6, it says, "Accessory buildings shall be limited to one story plus an attic, attic as defined herein." Now, attic is not added to here, but there's a definition. And in the definition in 1013, it says, an attic is, says, "This space may be used for either storage or as habitable living area, provided that it does not contain a kitchen."
So you mentioned storage, and all we talk about right now is storage. But it doesn't seem like it's very clear in the changes as to what we are allowing in this space. Or do we want to be silent about what we're allowing?
That's exactly why we're here tonight. And that's the kind of feedback we want. And we'll, you know, the intent, the intent is that, that accessory space, accessory building, accessory space in that building is not used for a dwelling unit, is only used for permitted accessory uses that you would otherwise be allowed to do on your property. Yeah, I think if it needs to be tweaked, I'm sure it does. I'm sure this isn't the perfect language. This is a draft. You know, if people have, if we leave this meeting and you're on board with the concepts, then I think you can text staff or email the staff and say, hey, how about this language or that language? I don't think we need to wordsmith it tonight. But we're trying to get to some kind of consensus on these main issues of use and bulk regulations. And, and, yeah, we should absolutely, before this is finalized, we need to make sure the language accurately reflects what we're trying to achieve here.
So another issue is, I agree with what Commissioner Matthews is saying about, we, I think, I think the village, when they're crafting this language, should really try to not allow people to sneak in, you know, dwelling units for, you know, your uncle, a friend that's homeless for a while, your son who's instead of living in the basement wants to live above the garage, whatever it is. So I think there needs to be a lot of attention to not allowing that. And I don't really have a good suggestion right now as to how not to do that. But in general, I, I support the idea of allowing some kind of usable space beyond storage with sufficient head height above most garages. But one of my concerns with this is, is the way this is written right now, will it treat different garages unfairly? For instance, what if you have a flat roof garage? Is it possible to do this? The issue of dormers, I mean, all that's allowed right now are dormers on a sort of a traditional gabled or hip roof kind of, kind of garage. What if you have something different? And then the dormer that's shown in the, this is a lot, I know, these are just questions. The dormer that's shown in the diagram, from what I can tell, is actually a, like a flat roof. I don't know if that's really a dormer, but it's like a flat roof. It's not a shed roof. It's not a peaked roof like a gabled kind of dormer, that kind of thing. So I'm wondering if that's, if, you know, if that's what we want, or is that not what, it's not consistent with the rest of the roof. I mean, these are sort of aesthetic questions. But again, the issue of treating all garages the same, if you happen to have a gabled roof garage, well, great, you can put on this bonus room. But if you have a flat roof garage, well, you can't. Now, I know that recently, there was a redesign of a house in Riverside. And the actual building, what they did, I think, to comply with the building setback plane, was in the top of the house, they moved in, they put up a box, much like what you're showing there. And then that was like some kind of a bonus room or whatever on top. Now, could someone with a flat roof be allowed to do the same thing or another kind of roof? And then a question I had in the diagram is, when you were making your presentation, I think you mentioned the setback plane being measured from the side lot line. But I think in the text and on your diagram, it shows that plane being teed off of the top of the sidewall, not, not the lot line. And following on to that, that's only applying if, if the intent is really to take that measurement from the side lot line. What about the interior of the lot? Why couldn't someone, you know, bring whatever it is, dormer, whatever additional structure on the garage, far over to this existing sidewall, not all the way there, but under the regulations, have additional space above the interior of the garage, the interior lot of the garage? I'm just trying to think about how people could game this. Including if someone comes in with a brand new building and wants to build a brand new garage, and wants to, you know, they're not remending what's already existing, but they're building something from new, and they could really max out the envelope that's allowed.
Let me address your first comment first. This is a drawing not done by an architect, done by myself. It It is intended to represent a traditional dormer roof, not a flat, not a flat roof. Imagine that's just one slice of that, cross-section of that, so there's, at the peak. So, imagine, if I could draw in three dimensions, I'd be able to show that more clearly. But again, that is clearly intended to just show a cross-section and the peak. It would, certainly, that 45-degree angle would occur on all four sides.
Okay.
So, all four sides would have to, under the draft, would have to, all four sides of that dormer would have to be set back from the edge by a similar amount, as you see here.
So, the point of approach, of where the plane starts is on the edge of the building, not at the side?
Well, under the draft right now, yeah. I mean, you could do it either way. It's six of one, half dozen of the other. Probably makes more sense to take it from the side building wall to 12 feet, because I'm not sure what makes more sense, actually. But, as an example, so here on the second page, this isn't in your packet, I just threw this together. That's the same exact building, same exact dormer shown from the side instead of the front. So, you can see, and that, the line of that dormer is the peak of the roof.
Okay.
But, and then, yeah, I think, and you'll have to refresh me on the other questions or comments, but, I mean, this is a draft. As I said before, it needs to be tweaked. We need to make, you're absolutely right. We need to make sure there's no unintended consequences. The point again tonight is just to say, you know, do you want staff to draft, redraft this thing in some fashion, relative, addressing the use in the bulk regulations? I mean, really, the whole bulk regulation thing really only is substantial if you're willing to do something, if you're agreeable to doing something or recommending something.
When you, when you mean change the bulk regulations, what exactly are you?
Whether or not you think it needs to go up to 19 or 20 feet.
The height, the sidewall?
Right. Not the sidewall, the peak.
The peak.
Yeah, I would keep the sidewall at 12 feet no matter what. But I think you could raise the peak to 19 or 20 feet and use that 45-degree angle in some fashion to make sure that if they go above 18, they're set back further.
Is 12 feet the typical height of a sidewall for a typical garage?
It's the maximum height permitted.
It's the maximum height, so someone could do a 10-foot height?
Most are shorter than that.
And then have a higher second floor, second story.
It would depend on how we drafted the final language. I mean, you could draft it, say, you just start at 12 feet above grade and that's the 45-degree line.
And that's where you start your line?
We'd have to think that through.
I just want to jump in here for Commissioner Miller's first comment. I think, I also got confused, it seemed to be inconsistent when people could, habitable living area, that's a phrase that's in the existing code, and I think that's problematic. So, we can either change that or make a clear definition for that. Because you added a definition for dwelling, we can contrast it with that.
Yes.
Please.
I share the confusion on that issue. I think if the intention of the board is to allow sleeping rooms in these garages that can be used by a family member, I think it's fine as written. But if the board does not want sleeping rooms in the garages, that should be specifically called out. Sleeping rooms is a term that's in the building code. It has a definition and perhaps it could be used double duty in the zoning ordinance as well.
Not going to ask you to recite code, but generally speaking, is a sofa not a sleeping room?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Just a sofa.
Please repeat that.
I was asking, you know, talking about the son who's, or daughter, who's staying in the garage, would having a sofa there make it a sleeping room by definition? And no, I don't believe so, but could be wrong. Question, comment?
Question, I think it's more commentary than anything. I think many of the issues that Commissioner Miller brings up can be addressed with wordsmithing and additional thought. So, just better defining when and where this 45-degree line is measured, and it may have to be applied in dual, a dual manner where it both controls the height and the setback of the structure itself and the, and the height measured and the height of the dormer as measured from the sidewall. So, I think the 45-degree line can do, would need to be applied. But also, bigger concern is, I'm equally concerned, as Commissioner Matthews noted, about the plumbing issue and, as Chairperson Mateo noted, and Henigan, the use of the word habitable. And that is, I think, a dangerous road to go down when we use that word. And maybe there's some other phrasing that can be identified where we're not in, when I hear habitable, I'm thinking permanent living space rather than, this is meant as a temporary use. I go to my office, I use it, and then I go live in my house. And partially, the concern there is that, as Commissioner Matthews noted, we are getting, if, and I'm opposed to it, full plumbing were allowed, we're getting dangerously close to accessory dwelling units. Where, and I think this gets to be a more interesting and detailed question with staff, is looking at building codes. In the definition of attic, it notes complies with applicable building codes. We're really only concerned about building codes for people use in the upper portion of the attic. We're not concerned about them with regards to the garage space so much. So, I think there's going, if we continue down this road, we're going to have to kind of separate out the space use, because energy codes for people use are vastly different than energy codes for vehicles. There are no energy codes. You have a garage door, it's aluminum, it can freeze, we don't care. But I'm, that's more of a challenge than needing a comment. But definitely, the virging towards accessory dwelling units, I think we need to be, draw a pretty firm line, and I'm not sure enforcement is the, that's the last resort.
I agree with that.
I rambled slightly, but I'm done.
So, I meant to email you six or eight hours ago with the questions that I didn't drop a bomb on you here. I think most two-car, two-car garages are 20 by 20, right? I'm wondering what size upper-floor room that would result in, maybe as this is revised, we can, somebody can try to calculate that for us.
Oh, 20 by 20, I think so, because I think in the past, we did that thing where the two-car garages for one of our past activities was 400 square feet and a three-car garage was 600 square. I think that's roughly what we decided before.
And chances are, if these changes go through, they're really only going to apply to new construction, I think.
You mean, you think you, people will not revise their existing garages?
I don't know that many would.
Right.
I mean, because you need HVAC, you need stairs to get upstairs to code. It's not insignificant.
It's probably more effective to simply rebuild, or sorry, build new rather than try and renovate. I believe the dimension you're looking for would become an eight-foot-wide dormer rather than 12, if we use a 20 by 20 garage.
It's pretty small. Other feedback?
So, I'm not sure if you discussed this when you were talking about the 15-foot width for the dormer, but what was the reasoning for choosing 15 feet as the width of a roof dormer, the allowed width or one-half of the width?
I'm not sure where, what?
So, in the roof dormers, it says, "Roof dormers are permitted on accessory buildings subject to the following. Dormers on accessory buildings shall not exceed 15 feet or one-half the width of the adjoining sidewall's facade, whichever is less." So, was there either half of the width of the, or the length of the garage or 15 feet?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'm not sure what the answer, why, where the 15 feet came from, quite frankly. We'll have to look, take a look at that.
I wasn't sure if that was aesthetic or structural or whatever.
I'll just add that I like the bulk regulations as proposed. They make, they make sense to me and I wouldn't all, I would also not have a problem with going up to 19 feet or 20 feet if staff finds that it would practically make more sense to do that.
Just trying to remember if, in recent years, staff has put together a table of other communities and what the peak height of the roof was. Does anybody remember that?
For a garage?
Yeah.
I remember a staff memo relating to bonus rooms in garages, but I don't remember that it actually addressed bulk regulations of the same.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
Do we think that might be helpful to compare to similar communities, find out what their peak heights are?
I don't know.
Or do we not get?
Hopefully.
I think that would be useful, as long as we also make sure to find out if they allow habitable space in that upper story.
To add to Commissioner Henigan, if they're, what they're defining habitable, what they're calling it, what, what secret words are they using to, and how are they limiting the use of that space to something by the homeowner rather than allowing it to become an underground, illegal living space?
Okay, well, if you have other comments or questions, you can share them with Planner Siren going forward.
I have an added question. I wasn't on the zoning commission when this was first discussed last year. What, what is, going to the attic definition, what was the reasoning with striking "does not contain a kitchen"? And, and I think that goes with the definition of habitability. I just looked up the definition of habitability and it means suitable to live in. I too would like to discourage people from using accessory buildings as living unit or sleeping dwellings. And I think that it's important to iron down that habitability language. But usually, in my mind, and with my experience with other villages, which is limited, it's usually, they usually, it's the kitchen that they don't want in the other place, in the attics and basements and things like that. And typically, these municipalities require the removal of the kitchen prior to sale. And I think that's the test that other communities use with regard to whether or not somebody's actually living in those accessory units or not. So, I'm just curious as to, was there a reason why "does not contain a kitchen" deleted that I maybe can't think about?
This, this draft was based on the assumption that plumbing, full plumbing, would be allowed. It's pretty clear that the majority of the Planning and Zoning Commission does not want to allow full plumbing. So, that language would, would become moot. I mean, we would leave that, we would not make that change as drafted, based on your direction tonight.
So, you would leave in the words "does not contain a kitchen"? Because you don't, we don't want these dwelling units to, or these accessory buildings to contain a kitchen.
Right, we would make, yeah, well, that's up to you, but I would think you would want to leave that in there or change it to make it clear that kitchens and, you know, the plumbing is not allowed. Yep.
Please.
Last comment. In, lest you think that I'm opposed to what completely opposed, I am in support of the broader use of our accessory buildings and better temporary use, and, but it's the beyond part that gets to me. So, open and willing to continue this discussion.
And for the record, I have to think about it more, but at the moment, I don't necessarily have a problem with some sort of limited plumbing to these accessory buildings. Because if we are talking at home offices, home offices and whatnot, when it's winter, it's a little bit more difficult to, to have to use the facilities in the home rather than having facilities there available.
So, as we wrap this discussion up, do we have consensus that we want to limit plumbing?
I, I would say, you know, what are, I think our initial, what was our initial advisory in this, was to allow sink and a toilet but no bath or shower?
I think so.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's fine, because, I mean, I, I can live with that, because to me, it's when you put the bath and shower in, it's then when you're getting into a dwelling, you know? If somebody can't work at a home office without showering, I have little sympathy for them. They can go into their house, right? I understand wanting to have a sink or a toilet, I mean, especially because this isn't, this isn't just a home office. Like you said, it could be, I mean, you know, it could be used for other things as well, so I can understand a sink. The shower and bath, I'm, you know, no, I would not, I would not support that personally.
I would add to that, no kitchen.
Commissioner Henigan, are you in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. I think I know your opinions. And then, are we open to exploring a higher peak, roof peak, 19 or 20 feet?
I think so.
With a little bit more information? Okay, I'm seeing nodding heads.
And this is just a silly point, but shouldn't the headline at 1073 be accessory buildings and uses? I know that, that's your point, but it still says structures.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Well, but no, that covers then other structures that are in B and B to P, I think. So, and I think a lot of this can be addressed with better definitions and, as Mr. Pollak suggested, like referencing uses that are allowed in this space. But I think some of the definitions are sloppy, confusing, whatever.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Pollak.
Thank you. This was very helpful. You've provided excellent direction, I think, to staff, and I will continue to work with staff and get you a, an updated red line version based on your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to new business, B, discussion of temporary membrane structures and temporary storage tents and canopies, page 41 of the PDF.
So, this was brought up because during the consideration of the ordinance to approve a variation to allow the use of a temporary tent at Riverside Presbyterian Church, the Board of Trustees gave staff two directives to amend the code to allow tents or temporary structures to be erected for a few days or a weekend instead of 30 days at a time, and to consider actually removing temporary use requirements altogether from the zoning ordinance and instead including such standards within the village's special event application. So, we provided the, in your packet, the meeting minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting and the previously drafted temporary membrane structures, temporary storage tents and canopies. language for your consideration and discussion.
Thoughts, questions? Attorney Morris, please.
Right. I just wanted to provide some additional information. So looking back even further, I was recalling that, you know, this temporary membrane text was added to the code a number of years ago. So I, I looked back and it was added, I believe, in around two thousand and ten. In the original intent, one of the whereas clauses or findings made in the ordinance was the purpose of the membrane structures. Board has also concluded it's necessary to regulate temporary membrane structures, tents and canopies and temporary storage containers within the various zoning district as it had been noted by staff that such structures are being increasingly used as a substitute for sheds. So the focus was really on storage, was, was the purpose of these particular amendments. When, when, during the pandemic, when we looked at tents for the schools and the churches, we were looking at them as a temporary use in a separate section, board-approved temporary use. But the board had given some direction that we want these to go through a regular zoning process going forward. So this was the best fit for that because it does talk about tents. But I guess one of my thoughts was because this is really meant to regulate the storage, maybe we leave this particular language here. You can tweak it, but, and, and their other suggestion was move this, the language dealing with the special event type of tents over to the regular village code. So we could certainly do that. We just need to understand what kind of, what kind of restrictions the PCC and the board were interested in imposing on those, one of which was the, the number of days.
I sort of didn't, don't understand what's being asked of us here. And I guess one way that I could approach this is I envision, I, I don't, I don't know what the special event process is, but this would seem. What if someone right now on, on the residential lot wanted to put up a tent canopy for something? You know, a wedding, graduation, whatever, for a weekend, you know, three days? Is what's being proposed here that that would be a special event or that that would have to go through some permitting process? Or what exactly? And would it have to go through now, if anything?
I think now, as long as it meets the setbacks and such, people can do that for the thirty days, not to exceed forty-five.
But now, would that change?
It depends how you address it, right? So you don't have to, I, I think one of the concerns of the board and, and Trustee Pollack can talk about it too, was just, they didn't want the tents to be up for weeks and weeks and just, and they thought maybe even, I think, the current thirty and forty-five days in the terms of special events might have been a little excessive. So we could phrase something in terms of, you know, you have to take it down within two days of the event for which it's erected, right? If you're putting it up for a wedding, it's not a big imposition to take it down. You wouldn't need a permit necessarily, but if that tent sat there for a week after the wedding or three weeks or whatever, someone could, you know, the village could address it. Do you want to get Trustee Pollack?
May I?
Please.
So hopefully I can put some perspective or context to this. This ca, the board's discussion was in the context of the Presbyterian Church's variation. And the only thing I, I'm pretty certain about is that the board's consensus was that if the Presbyterian Church wanted to have that tent in their front yard, in their street yard, for three or four days, once or twice a year, we'd be okay with that. And I think that the consensus, this is the part where it gets a little murkier, but I think the thinking was that, that maybe that be addressed outside of the zoning, not for the Planning and Zoning Commission to even weigh in on, just under the special event procedures, which is just done primarily administratively these days. But it got kind of intermingled with the zoning question. Now, my personal opinion as a trustee is that we should leave the zoning alone and we should just add a section that says, not, again, not under your purview, but just to the special event section, saying that if, if, if a church or anyone wants to have a tent in a street yard for one weekend or maybe two weekends a year, we should allow that. And that's a whole separate issue than the thirty or forty-five day issue in a non-street yard. I personally am hesitant to take away an institution's ability or even a property owner's ability to have a tent in their backyard for thirty days over the course of a summer. But I also think that a special event for a weekend is okay for a tent. People can put up with that for a few days. So hopefully that gives you a little context of the board's discussion.
So it's the street yard that's really sort of a critical hinge point here. It's if people want to put a camp membrane up in a street yard for one day, two days, three days. That's what the board wants us to address.
That's where we had the problem with the Presbyterian Church variation is I think the consensus of the board was, you know, we don't want to allow a tent in a street yard in the same way that we allow it in a backyard or side yard. And, and, and if it's there for a weekend, that's fine. It needs to have a permit from the village, but we should allow that.
That's, you're the board member, I was in the audience, but my memory was not specifically in the street yard, just regardless, have a time limit on it.
Yeah, it, it was unclear. You're, you're right. I, I may be, I, I may be assuming things from the other trustees, but, but my sense, and I commented at the board meeting that I was concerned about taking away the thirty and forty-five day or whatever that is, that I didn't really want it, didn't think I wanted to take that away from people. But you're right, the board kind of made it seem like they were asking that we amend the zoning ordinance to limit these to three or four days at a time. And I really don't think that was the intent, even though I think you're right, that, that may have come across that way.
So Attorney Morris, your history was very helpful, that it's more of a storage thing. So I wonder if we can tweak the ordinance ten seven three N to somehow emphasize, even though storage is in there repeatedly, that it's not for an event?
Yeah.
As to the special event application, what are your thoughts on that? From a staff perspective, do you think adding that limitation, it has to be removed within a certain amount of time, would, would work?
If you're asking me to strike through the language about, about the amount of time and making that a policy choice instead of a code requirement, I'm sorry.
Well, what I'm hearing is back in two thousand and ten, the board wanted to stop having people, have people having tents for months and months and months. So that restriction is there. If that was the original intent, then I could see keeping that as long as we're clarifying that that is for.
Sure.
These uses and not for a single event.
Sure. That could be a way to address that, yes.
But then how would, if the church were to start all over again, or Saint Mary now wants a tent, you've been here all of a few weeks. Do we think that organizations, homeowners would know that they need to get a permit? I don't, I have no sense.
For, for a street yard or just in general?
In general.
Cause I don't know if they need one for the backyards.
Right, or the side yard, I think, I think.
And I don't want to go down the road of regulating tents in backyards.
I think there should be some limitation on tents in backyards, but I think what we have now is acceptable probably, no one's been complaining, but.
So, so I did, I guess I didn't get the impression the board was interested in requiring people to get a permit for a tent on a regular basis. I think what Trustee Pollack was saying was, you know, we, we want to make sure that whether it's a special event or storage, that they're not up for excessive periods of time. And especially cognizant of the street yard limitations and, and where they're particularly visible, I guess.
They can be pretty visible in backyards.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But right now, temporary tents are not allowed in the street yard unless someone sought a permit, isn't that true?
Yeah.
So what are we trying, I don't understand what we're trying to fix. And if the church had to come to the board or the administration for a special event permit to put this tent in their street yard, then they could automatic, couldn't they automatically have been limited in the amount of time that they could have it? I wasn't at the meeting of the PCC that time, so I don't remember that discussion.
Well, could we add another section? So N, now the new O is use of temporary membranes for events and put in the time limit?
I, I believe the request for, from the Board of Trustees was to consider actually removing the time limit from the ordinance, making that a policy choice?
Well, but they, I believe everybody that night was thinking about tents for events and not so much tents for storage. And do we want to recommend limiting tent use for storage to a shorter period of time than thirty days? Or do we want to leave that as is for the purposes of storage?
So another, another portion of that same amendment had to do with those moving pods that people put in their driveway sometimes. So I think that's part of the thought process too, is there, there may be occasions where you're getting your garage rebuilt, you're doing whatever, and you need to utilize this. And, and so that may be some of the motivation between, behind the thirty days.
Well, I, I'm just not very clear on what we're being asked to do, but in looking at the red line language, I did have a few questions on that, not to confuse things, which is that it wasn't clear to me. It talks about a storage canopy may not exceed two hundred square feet for a structure or tent, or four hundred square feet for a canopy, or seven hundred square feet for an open canopy. And I'm not sure, again, all those terms are defined. It was very confusing to me. Then I also had a question about, well, what if people had multiple storage tents? It says a storage tent can't exceed two hundred square feet. What if they had four? There's no limitation on that, so I had issues with the language.
So that language came from the TOD consultant and I'm not sure what they were imagining?
And we have a definition of canopy in our code. And that's like a canopy over a dry, a doorway or a, we don't have a tent canopy definition, I think, which I think we could use if we're going down this road or even right now because we refer, reference canopies.
Give me a flashback to the canopy awning discussions.
Exactly, that's, that's the definition.
Trustee Pollack?
Thank you. I would suggest if you're confused about the board's direction, that you ask the board to clarify, cause I am confused about the board's direction. I didn't think this was to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was my impression that the staff is going to come back to the board with options because my intent as a trustee was simply to amend the special event application process to allow street yard tents for three or four days at a time, which does not involve the Planning and Zoning Commission at all. And so because we didn't take that next step, that came back to the board, I don't think you really have any direction from, from the board. And I, I may be wrong about that, but that's my recollection of, of the board's discussion.
Well, the one variation was tabled until your November third meeting. So what needs to be done and by whom? But for that.
So the minutes say the board directed staff to consider removing the temporary use requirement altogether from the zoning ordinance and include such standards for temporary structures within the village's special event application. Okay, so, so understanding that me, although we may want to leave the language that's there there to apply to storage, we then have to look at the special event aspect of it, which isn't really addressed in this amendment or even necessarily something that you have to consider. But why, why don't we spend, spend a little time taking a crack at that and getting some direction and seeing where we're at without, without any need for further input from you guys tonight unless you want to offer some.
Would you like to offer some further input at this point?
I would, thank you. I believe, I'm sorry for using filler words. Retaining ten seven dash three accessory structures and uses, paragraph N, temporary membrane structures. I think it should remain in the code in some fashion because we are talking about temporary membrane structures. And generally, when I think of this, as I was reading this again, we are talking about cloth, vinyl, plastic-covered metal erections. And so we need some manner of regulating that, keeping it from happening, because if we don't have it in the zoning code, then someone's going to put it up and they're going to call it a structure and not a tent. And it's going to be there and we're going to be in a fight. So the thirty day consecutive with the forty-five day total, I think, gives us as a village a little additional control over the matter. Deferring other aspects to ordinance, to policy, that I don't think that's, but I think we need to have something in our zoning code about these membrane-covered metal erections.
Just out of curiosity, is an entity or an individual limited to how many special events they're able to have in a year?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
So potentially, an entity or an individual can have a lot of special events and exceed the forty-five days? Am I thinking correctly?
And I think that goes back to then it goes to policy.
Right, that, that can be built into the policy as well. You know, similar to garage sales, for instance, you can only have so many garage sales in a year. You can't have one every weekend, which some people would try to do if that wasn't in there, so.
I think it would be, I would suggest it could be useful to break out the treatment of these things between residences and business districts and non-residential uses in residential districts, like churches and schools and et cetera.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'm, I'm also a little concerned about, and, and maybe it's moot, but the language, temporary membrane structures do not include tent structures used for commercial purposes.
Yes.
So can that leave a door open with regard to individuals or entities, you know, selling things from the tent or?
Was that the consultant's language again?
I think it was.
Yeah. I don't know that it was in there originally, but I think it did, he did put it in there. I think the idea there is like Chuchu's tent, LaBarre's tent.
I agree.
They're excluded from this.
Yeah.
Whether that would be phrased better?
Yeah, I would want to encourage that. I mean, the, the restaurant tents, but.
But are those temporary? Isn't that more of a permanent? It's up year-round and it's not up for just thirty days? That was one of my questions too.
What tent is up permanently?
The metal structure they have that comes off the side of the brick building, you know, the post office. That's not a, it's, it says temporary membrane structures don't include commercial structures, but number, that would be a commercial structure like the Chuchus. And it's not temporary, so it must be something else. I'm guessing it's treated as something else, not a temporary.
Right, I mean, that's, that whole structure is, is governed by an agreement between the village and. Right, I mean, that's, that whole structure is, is governed by an agreement between the village and
Right.
Chuchu, because it's on, partially on village property.
Well, we can ask staff to clarify and come up with some new language, perhaps.
Sure.
Right, so I, I think we understand some of the concepts, the street yards, the limitation on days, the, the limitations on number in a year, all that kind of thing, and we can try to, and distinguishing between the different types of uses. So we'll tackle it.
All right. Next up is discussion of the 2023 work plan for the Commission, page 49.
Thank you.
Chairperson Mateo, with input from Commissioners Marhol and Miller, created a draft 2023 work plan, and that's included in the packet for your review. This would be, this is the first discussion of the work plan. We're looking for your input and prioritization of the items. I'll bring back a revised work plan based on the discussion, and hopefully have a, a vote and approval from you at, at your next meeting.
So Commissioner Miller added, suggested something to add to the work plan, which honestly I'm blanking on right now, because it's been really busy 48 hours, but we decided.
I don't know if we, we have, I would appreciate just mentioning it for people to start thinking about, but it's already quite full. But as I look around, so right now, for our bulk requirements, it allows, in R1A or R1AA, which is basically all of the residential districts, the peak height of a roof can be 38 feet. We have a lot of areas in the village where the predominant structures, building structures, are much lower than that. They're basically a story or story and a half. So I'm just wondering if going forward, if, if the village, if the residents of the village, you know, if we want to think about whether we really want to have, allow that tall of buildings throughout the R1A and R1AA districts, because I think it'd be quite jarring if you had all of a sudden, you know, a residential building that's basically twice the height of all the other buildings near it. And we do have a few sensitive neighborhoods too, within the village, that that might be even more jarring. So that was my additional suggestion, but perhaps we can table that and think about it for the next work plan.
Well, it might be something that we'll have time to look at during the year.
I just get increasingly worried, especially with some of the recent buildings that were built. And now you can see what 38-foot tall houses that meets the building set back plain, and so.
I'd like to support Commissioner Miller's proposal. I know that that, I've heard resident commentary expressing concern about that dimensional envelope.
Any thoughts on the proposed plan? Well done. It looks very good. If you have any edits that you want to make to it, tweaks, please get them to Planner Siren, and then we'll have it finalized and presented to the Board in November. Is that the hope? That is the hope. Okay, great, yes.
I'd actually like to present a potential additional item, which is the requirements for driveway widths. As you may remember, I came out rather strongly against the memo we received from the village engineer. And doing a little of my own research after that, research being Google, I did find some communities, including Minneapolis, if my memory is correct, where smaller dimensions in driveway widths and parking aisles were allowed. And so I think we should continue looking at that and thinking about today's discussion, which I could not be a part of for good reason, but when we have small lots, they really do not need wide driveways.
Right, the aisle space, the 24-foot wide aisle space.
Even the driveway width, and I will point to the lot adjacent to us that's village-owned, that is a two-way driveway, and it is probably about 12 feet wide. And unless there are significant safety or accident concerns, I think we can look at reducing some things when appropriate. And I'm not calling this as appropriate for something like Riverside Foods or a high-use church driveway, for example.
We can add that to the to-do list.
I, I support that. I mean, I don't know how we'd go about overcoming the objections of the engineers, but I mean, what kind of evidence would we?
The engineer provided an opinion, and as I noted, there are other opinions out there, and then we discuss.
I had a question about the, about both B and C, but particularly B, where it seems like it's the parkway trees and approved site plan landscaping. I'm just, it sounds to me, the way it's written down here, that it's basically a matter of enforcement. Or was there a thought that there should be changes to the code tech, the text of the code?
There are, this obviously was partially by myself. There have been a number of recent developments where there were trees in the front yard, and after post-development, there's nothing.
Right. I, I can see that, but is that something that we can do something about, or is that just a matter of getting enforcement?
It may be a policy issue. It depends on what our replacement policy is. The vest, actually, all public improvements, when done by the DOT or the tollway, have a tree replacement policy, meaning if you cut it down, something needs to be replaced somewhere, somehow. It's not that restrictive. There's different ways to do it.
Well, we have a two-tree-in-the-parkway requirement, or one tree in the front yard if the parkway's not wide enough, or something like that.
But for example, you have a lot that, say, my own house, it has two giant oak trees, which are probably four feet in diameter each. If a developer came and bought that property, they could cut both trees down and put one or two trees in the parkway and call it a day.
Oh, I see what you mean. As far as that goes, the mass of the tree.
It was on my to-do list to see, are we enforcing it? If we're not, should we be? And of course, by we, we mean staff. And then, did you want to talk about grasses and vegetation? Your thoughts on that? You brought it up.
Oh, um, sorry, I.
No, you, no.
I brought it up as a good idea, I think. And this also might be more of a policy issue than a planning and zoning, but village ordinance requires mowing to some six-inch height, I believe. But native grasses all are significantly taller than that. And so when we start looking at land, actually, it could be zoning, because it's a landscaping issue, what do we allow for landscaping? What do we call it? Native grasses that are three feet tall are a lot different than Kentucky bluegrass that's three feet tall if it's standing up, and otherwise it just looks like a bad, bad maintenance. There is a difference. We do want more native plantings for various reasons, including our friends, the monarchs. So how do we make that work?
And that could probably fit in with our impervious surface calculations and recommendations, like rain gardens and whatnot.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to old business, review proposed 2023 meeting calendar, our very last page. So when we last looked at the calendar, the proposed date for November was, I think, just a couple of days before, or a day before Thanksgiving, and the December one was two days after Christmas. So these proposed ones, you can see in front of you. What do we think about November 29?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. And December 20? It's five days before Christmas.
Fine, that would work for me, I think.
So alternatively, we could maybe look at the 18th, the Monday?
I would have a conflict for the 20th.
You have a conflict for the 20th?
I do.
Anybody looking in their crystal balls know what they're doing December 18th? Because I don't think there are any other commission meetings.
2023, no. I do not.
The 18th would be fine for me. It's just a few days before Christmas.
Yeah, I'd also like to consider the Monday, just to give us some additional breathing room before, before the holiday.
Okay, if that works.
No problem, I'll update it.
All right. I erred today. I forgot to go through the standards for the site plan review. I apologize for that, but since you all have them, I'm assuming and hoping that you're not thinking, oh, my gosh, I wanted to bring up something about traffic flow. So again, apologies for completely skipping on that. All right, our next meeting is October 26, and we do have agenda items already, correct?
Yes, we do.
All right, so please keep that on your calendar. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconds?
Seconds.
Let's call the roll.
Okay.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work. Appreciate it. See you in October.